Good afternoon. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. We're going to hear Bill Number 23-0424. I am Councilman Isaac Gisius Schleifer, Chair of the Committee. To my left is Councilman Costello. To his left is Councilwoman Ramos. To my right is Councilman Torrance and Council Vice President Middleton. We're also joined by members of the Council President's Office and the Mayor's Office and multiple agencies. Before we get started and turn it over to the agencies for their reports, this unfair, abusive, and deceptive trade practices bill was originally—there was a bill originally introduced in February. We held a hearing on it about a month or so ago. And this bill basically takes out the parts that there was support for and the parts that still need to be worked on is not part of this bill as it pertains to creating a new agency in the city as well as a new commission. This simply deals with these unfair, abusive, and deceptive trade practices. And so we will start first with Nina from the Mayor's Office regarding the agencies' reports.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nina Thamelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. All three agencies that were referred this bill stand by their reports. The Department of Finance does not oppose. And then I'll let Office of Equity and Civil Rights speak to their report.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tyler Chanel from the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. We typically will take—get these bills and we do an entire racial equity impact assessment. This one was turned around very quickly, so we couldn't go through that whole process. But what we did was pretty much a racial equity impact statement. And it reads, "The Office of Equity and Civil Rights has reviewed City Council Bill 23-0424 and has concluded that this proposed ordinance will likely improve positive outcomes for Black, Latin, and other residents of color. Historically, Black, Latin, and other residents of color have been targeted by unfair, abusive, and deceptive practices. To remedy these historic wrongdoings, this bill establishes civil and criminal penalties for violations and authorizes the city solicitor on behalf of the city to investigate potential violations and initiate legal proceedings for injunctive relief and the imposition and collection of civil penalties. Ensuring fair and equitable trade practices not only upholds principles of social justice but also promotes economic stability and opportunities for marginalized communities. By safeguarding communities from exploitative practices, Baltimore City will foster a more inclusive and equitable society where everyone can participate in the benefits of a thriving economy, ultimately contributing to a more just and prosperous future for all." So, you know, we do support this bill.
And one other announcement that—I just want to tell the members of the committee, members of the public and those joining us that we will not be voting this bill out tonight. And so this is just a second conversation on this, and then we will take up, you know, voting on this bill at a later date. And so with that, I will turn it over to the solicitor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Mr. Chair and honorable members of the council. Ebony Thompson, Acting City Solicitor. I'm here before you today representing the Department of Law to strongly advocate for the passage of Consumer Protection Bill 23-0424. This bill holds paramount importance for our city, particularly given its potential to address unfair and deceptive conduct at the expense of our residents. It is worth noting that this issue was initially a part of Council Bill 23-0347 that was introduced seven months ago on February 6. Since that bill is currently under discussion and input, it is in the best interest of our city to pass a standalone consumer protection bill without further delay. But please allow me just to summarize briefly the key reasons why this bill is so crucial for Baltimore. Number one, there is a critical need for local consumer protection. Baltimore City is in dire need of a local consumer protection bill. And while the state of Maryland allows local governments to regulate consumer protection, our city has yet to seize this authorization. Our current consumer protection ordinance, which dates back to the 1970s, primarily focuses on criminal penalties for false advertising and has proven ineffective in modern times. Consequently, the city can only pursue legal action against companies when they harm the city directly, such as in cases against big oil and opioid industry. We currently lack the means to address companies harming our citizens through unfair and deceptive trade practices. Number two, missed opportunities. The state of Maryland empowers local governments to pursue fines and other relief under the Maryland Consumer Protection Act. But since Baltimore City has not yet enacted such powers, this lack of action has led us to miss out on opportunities to participate in significant consumer protection litigation. Examples of these missed opportunities for Baltimore include Polymer 80's deceptive practices about the nature of their ghost guns kit resulted in a $4.5 million judgment for Washington DC in 2022 and $5 million for Los Angeles this year. In 2022, Washington DC also received a $9.5 million settlement with Google relating to deceptive location tracking practices. Chicago has pending action against Grubhub for deceptive fees. They have also recovered $2 million from Uber Eats in 2022 for same. Washington DC has also recovered $1.8 million from Instacart in 2022 for misleading consumers and $2.8 million from DoorDash in 2020 for deceptive fees. Our city should not be left behind in seeking justice for its residents and leaving potentially millions of dollars on the table for our city. Number three, injunctions to stop bad conduct. This proposed ordinance will enable us to pursue injunctions against companies engaging in ongoing harmful conduct, as seen in Washington DC's case against Polymer 80. Obtaining an injunction or settlement that halts deceptive conduct will benefit all consumers. This bill empowers us to hold bad actors accountable and benefits both consumers in this city. And fourth, promotion of justice. Passage of this bill is imperative to ensure that Baltimore City joins other major cities and counties nationwide with local consumer protection ordinances. It is not only an opportunity to protect our residents but also a means to advocate for justice on their behalf. A strong business community is essential, but we must also hold bad actors accountable for preying on our most vulnerable residents. This bill allows us to seek justice for those who may not have a voice or who are simply unaware of their rights. In conclusion, this bill is not anti-business, it is anti-deception. Our affirmative litigation division has a proven track record of pursuing cases against entities that harm our city, and this bill provides an additional tool to hold bad actors responsible for their actions. I would like to just briefly address some of the opposition to this bill and comment on it from the Law Department. We have heard recently that opponents of this bill have raised some concerns about notice. I do want to emphasize that there are no notice or cure provisions in state law or in the Montgomery or Howard County local laws. Nonetheless, the Law Department's practice would generally be to attempt to reach a reasonable resolution prior to filing an action in court unless the consumer protection violations are part of a larger case. There's also arguments that there's no forced mediation requirement, but mediation is not required on the state level. Mediation is built into every settlement conference. Reflecting on my experience at the largest law firm in the state, even if there isn't a scheduled mediation, people pick up the phone. This isn't unique to the Law Department. This is the industry, and most of our cases do not go to trial. There's an argument that this bill may allow a possible abuse of power or process. Right now, no affirmative litigation is initiated from the Law Department that the solicitor doesn't know about. And this consumer protection bill now turns a common practice into a requirement by having the solicitor involved in all investigations. These investigations will not be arbitrary but handled by attorneys that are subject to the ethical requirements of the state bar. Further, the Maryland rules require that attorneys only file a case with substantial justification. If an attorney violates this rule, they can be ordered to pay the other side's attorney's fees. The city must have a reason to believe a violation has occurred before issuing a subpoena and pursuing an investigation. I would lastly like to address the claim that this law will somehow deter business from Baltimore. This bill serves to discourage bad actors, not business. We have a strong business community in Baltimore that this administration and the Law Department values and believes is essential for the success of our city. Equally, we believe we must hold bad actors accountable that prey on our citizens. The bill allows us to seek justice for those that may not have a voice—or even worse, have a voice but may not realize they should even be speaking. We understand that opponents may have their clients' interests at heart, but the Law Department is charged with advocating for the interests of this city. We believe it is time to exercise our right to advocate for consumers. We humbly request that you enable the Law Department to fight for our residents, to fight for their protections on a local level. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor. Do we have any questions from the council of the Law Department or any of the city agencies?
I do.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Acting Solicitor. I had a—just emphasizing—a question to emphasize a point. As you had stated, one of the pieces of opposition was about not—something not in the law to make sure that there's, you know, a cure or mediation or something. I have not seen that in any of the other things that we've passed. We passed a bill to—we passed two bills, actually, to increase the fines for, you know, people who are not rehabbing properties, right, to $1,000. It says in the bill that a violation—you know, there's a new citation could be issued every day because a new violation every day. But the practice of the Housing Department has—or DHCD has been to allow for a few days to be able to cure the citation. So my question is about, wouldn't the Law Department put in regulation what its practices will be in order to address that issue?
Thank you so much for that question. It is not currently in the state law, and it's not in the Montgomery, and it's not in Howard County local laws. And the reason why we don't want to put that in is because this may be a tag along, for example, for Polymer 80, where we were able—to advocate because they had direct harm to the city, so we were able to bring that. But had we had a consumer protection suit, we would have been able to add that on—that consumer protection on violations onto that. And again, like I said, we missed out on—well, DC recovered $4.5 million. So if that is in conjunction with an ongoing matter that we are—that we are already trying, that is something that we would include in that. And it is not a requirement for the state, and it's not in the local Howard County or Montgomery County. So we don't believe that is necessary.
Great. Okay. Thank you. And then my second question is to you but also maybe to the sponsor. The bill has that the—one of the penalties could be a $1,000 fine. Is that going to be the Law Department issuing that? Is it going to be—I guess it depends on what the violation is would be the entity that would issue the citation?
Well, I believe that we would actually—and I'll have my chief of affirmative litigation, but I believe that we would file that in court. So it would—we could either settle for it or we would be granted that if we went to trial and we were awarded that. And please correct me if I'm wrong.
Hi, Councilwoman. My name's Sarah Gross.
You gotta push the button—the right button until it lights up red. You are now on.
Thanks. Is it working now?
Yes.
It's red. Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, new technology to me. Good afternoon, Councilwoman. My name's Sarah Gross. I'm the chief of affirmative litigation. And just to, you know, address—I'm sorry, can you just restate the question?
I was trying to understand who would issue the citation of $1,000.
Okay. Yes, so this actually doesn't provide for citations. As the solicitor stated, it would be a lawsuit that would be filed in court to enforce the penalties and to obtain the injunction because we obviously couldn't unilaterally issue an injunction. It would have to be something that would be granted by the court.
Gotcha.
So those two would be sought in conjunction with each other. And it also gives the businesses who, you know, were filing the suit against—it gives them the due process abilities to go to court, to provide their defense. And then it gives the judge, who's a neutral arbitrator, the opportunity to determine what—if any—fines are warranted. So this actually, you know, places that decision in the hands of a judge. And so it wouldn't be the city determining the fines. It would be what we, as the attorneys, prove that we're entitled to under the law based on the number of violations and whether it's a continuing violation and that sort of thing.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying that for me. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and that's good—to know. Thank you for clarifying. And had I known that in advance, I would have probably thrown the Housing Department into this bill so that all of their fines also have to go through the circuit court. Is there any other questions? Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What you've proposed—and this question is either for you or the solicitor—I'll defer to you, Mr. Chair—is what has been proposed in this legislation stricter than existing state law?
No, it isn't. Actually, I believe—and I'll have my chief confirm, but I believe that the penalties are—it's $1,000 when the first offense is $10,000, I believe, for the state.
Under state law, the first penalty is $10,000, and the subsequent penalties are $25,000. So this is actually much less in terms of the fines themselves. In terms of the strictness of the requirements of the statute, we've basically wholesale adopted the state Consumer Protection Act. So even though we're actually permitted to adopt stricter standards, as long as they don't conflict, we actually just thought it was easier and cleaner to just adopt the state requirements for consumer protection. So in terms of the requirements themselves, they are equal to state law, and in terms of the fines, they are significantly less because, as you probably know, the charter caps our ability to fine at $1,000, so.
Can—Mr. Chair, can we have the Law Department provide that in writing, just summarizing that and the comparison? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And so Sarah, maybe could you also just provide clarity on a question I had had? If the city takes action against somebody for this and for harming the citizens of Baltimore, is the state Attorney General also able to go after them after the city were to work out a case, or is that a double jeopardy issue? How does that work?
No, that's correct. There are two separate laws. So both the Attorney General and the city could go after because they're essentially violations of two different laws. It's the same—they're federal consumer protection laws in place. So if a company violates with a federal consumer protection law by engaging consumer protection fraud across state lines, but they also violate the state law, the feds and the state can go after them for fines. So since they're two different laws, they would be subjected to two different penalties.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions? Anybody? All right, we'll call it for a public testimony in the order. I have it here. And anybody who has not signed up that would like to testify, I'll just call on you after the few names I have here. First one up is Robert Eaton. And you can come up to the podium.
Mr. Chair, is your—Aaron Greenfield?
Sure.
I meant to talk to Robert.
No problem. And Aaron, when you get to the podium, if you can just hit the right button until your microphone lights up red.
Sure. How do you like Mr. Enton throwing me right under the bus? We didn't even talk about that, and I'm the first up. I was waiting for him to put his foot in his mouth. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice President, members of the committee, good to see you. This is Aaron Greenfield on behalf of the Maryland Multi-Housing Association, which represents 67 companies who own or manage 226 apartment communities with over 38,000 units in Baltimore City. I first want to thank the chairman for his time and attention to this matter over the last few days, and of course, the city solicitor for her time and her staff's time to work with us. We do have a number of concerns associated with this legislation. I have written and supplied the committee with those concerns in writing. First, I want to—I guess now, second, I want to thank you for not voting this bill out yet. We think this bill needs work. We're not against the intent, but we think there are some legitimate concerns that still need to be addressed. For instance, I think it's important to underscore that this bill applies to any business—any business in the private sector. You don't have to be in the city. You don't have to be in the state. You don't even have to be in this country. So this bill's applicability is of great concern. And to the chairman's question earlier, how will the city solicitor and the Attorney General coordinate on these kinds of claims? We do know that there is a very strong likelihood, given the explanation, that this is a clearly not double jeopardy, and there are two statutes upon which someone could be pursued. Would respectfully disagree with the city solicitor. We think that the Maryland Consumer Protection Act does require conciliation if the department so sees grounds. And that is our reading, and Mr. Enton might speak to it a little more articulately than I, but under Section 13-402 of the Commercial Law Article, we think that that is a possibility. And why not provide that balance in the bill? Why not provide the opportunity for a business to receive a notice, cure that notice, come in and meet with the city solicitor's office in an informal conference of some sort, maybe have mediation? Why not build those safeguards in place other than just to swiftly litigate this and cost businesses thousands upon thousands, if not millions of dollars, that will just be passed on to consumers? So we think that this approach is expensive, and we just don't believe it's business-friendly. We think we can build in some safeguards that make it a little more palatable. We agree with the chairman that criminal penalties in the entirety should be stricken from the bill. And then I just want to talk about civil penalties lastly. So we read the state law a little bit differently than the city solicitor's office. We think—and it'd be curious to see what their response is—but we see that this bill is—a offense is $1,000 a day each day. The way the state fines work, as I understand it, is it's $10,000 for the entire violation, and then if there's a second violation, it's $25,000. So here you're looking at—take a housing provider in Baltimore City. 3,500 units, let's assume they're 3,500 residents. If my math is correct—which is a big assumption—they could be subject to face penalties to the tune of $1.83 billion. So we're talking—you know, this is a serious, serious bill that warrants incredible discussion, and I appreciate the fact, again, that it's not being voted out today, and really do welcome the opportunity to continue to work with the city solicitor's office and the chairman and the committee to reach some resolution on the bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, the next on the list wasn't you, Bob. You switched places with Aaron. There's somebody in between you guys. So—
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not yet, Bob. You switched places with Aaron, so you gotta take his spot. Next person up, and I apologize, the handwriting guy, Angela. Ange—is there somebody who—nope. Okay. Bob, it's all you.
Unfortunately, my hearing is not the greatest. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Robert Enton. I'm an attorney. I'm with the firm of Gordon Feinblatt, which for 50 years is right around the corner from you. Now we're over on Fleet Street. We moved a couple of years ago. I represent and have for many, many years a lot of different business organizations and business entities in their—for the legislature, state legislature. And from time to time, I appear before the city council when one of them have an issue and have worked with some of you that are in the room today. My clients include the Maryland Bankers Association, which is a statewide association for Maryland banks, large and small, the American Property Casualty Insurers Association, which has about 60 percent—their members have about 60 percent of the auto and homeowner's insurance policies in the state of Maryland. I represent Care First Blue Cross Blue Shield. I represent the Maryland Building Industry Association and a number of other clients and entities. Most of those clients have a very heavy presence in Baltimore City. We represent Albertsons, which owns Safeway. So our clients and my clients that I work for in the government relations field have a very heavy involvement in the city and throughout the state of Maryland. I had a conversation—we had a telephone meeting with the city solicitor the other day. I've had conversations with you, Mr. Chairman. And I would apologize to the committee and to the entire council to say that the bill that was introduced in February, when I looked at it, it was a 50-page bill, and most of it dealt with licensing, you know, permits for this and permits for that, for peep shows and things like that. And neither I nor anyone at the Bankers Association caught the two pages of that 50-page bill that dealt with the Consumer Protection Division and changed it from false advertising to a much broader bill. I want to thank Councilwoman Ramos because I wouldn't have seen this if I wasn't on her email chain. And she briefly mentioned it in her, like, weekly or monthly email, whichever it is, weekly, that there was a bill hearing on consumer protection. This was on Friday afternoon. So I started digging into it. Of course, it was Labor Day weekend, and I ended up with the flu and spent two days in bed. And then it was Labor Day. But I did get into it and sent it out to a bunch of my clients and to some other people. And we do have concerns. You have written testimony from Mr. Greenfield, who is my client as well, and from the American Property Casualty Insurers Association. So I don't want to bore you to death, and I'll try not to, but I would like to make a few points. First of all, when you look at the state statute—I've been involved with the state statute—I don't know, for 40 years. It's been on the books forever. And in all my years in Annapolis, no one has ever come down to Annapolis and said, "We need—we've got a problem with the state law, and we need to change it. There's this problem, there's that problem. We need to amend this, we need to amend that." Same thing—I don't know how many years the Montgomery County bill has been on the books, and the Howard County bill has been on the books, but no one's ever complained to me about those bills either. So, you know, I take—I'm familiar with the state law. I took a brief look over the weekend at the Howard County law and the Montgomery County law. So the state law is all set forth in Title 13 of the Commercial Law Article has the state law. And first of all, when you look at 13-104 of the state law, Commercial Law Article, you'll see that there are exemptions from the state law. This bill has no exemptions whatsoever. 13-104 says, "This title does not apply to the professional services of certified public accountant—of a public accountant, an architect, a clergyman, an engineer, a lawyer, a veterinarian, an insurance company," one of my clients, "authorized to do business in the state, Christian Science practitioner, land surveyor, property line surveyor, chiropractor, optometrist, physical therapist, on and on, associate real estate broker, or medical or dental practitioner, a public service company." There is a whole list of exemptions. And the reason there are exemptions is because all these industries that are mentioned are highly regulated industries. And there is a set for them of disciplinary actions and licensing boards that can take action against them. Now, I think that, once again, I didn't speak to anybody other than Mr. Greenfield over the weekend that even knew this hearing was being held today. But I guarantee you, you're going to hear from the hospitals because they're not exempt from this bill. You're going to hear from MedKai. They're not exempt from this bill. And on and on and on. So number one, I think that—and we're happy to work with the city solicitor. She's been very cordial in our discussions with her—to try to come up with a kind of reasonable list of entities that are already heavily regulated, where their regulator has the ability to make sure they toe the line, and that's why they're not included. And that'll, I think, address a number of my clients, including the insurance companies, number one. Number two—and Mr. Greenfield touched on this—when you go to Section 13, the Subtitle 4 of Title 13, it spells out very clearly the process for going forward—for the state Attorney General's office to go forward. And it's not just filing a lawsuit. What it is, is it's a process by which they are required, under the law—and this is in Section 13-402—they're required, under the law—if they review the—and they act when there's a complaint. And when there's a complaint, they have to review the complaint. And if they determine that the complaint, they believe, could have merit, well, then they have a process that they have to follow. And that process in 13-402 of the code—and this is not in this bill at all—says that if the division determines that there are reasonable grounds to believe that a violation has occurred— to believe that a violation has occurred, it shall attempt to conciliate the matter by methods of conference and persuasion with all interested parties and any representative they may choose to assist them. So, you know, there's a process by which the state Consumer Protection Division reaches out to the company that the complaint has been made against, if they believe there could be a basis for the complaint. And they bring them in, and they get the information, and they try to mediate it and conciliate it. I hope that's not my phone. Okay, thank you. Secondly, they try to get the parties to enter into a stipulation agreement. And I know that these are things that the office can do. But any of you that are in business, I think what you want to see is, you want it in the statute that these are, that this is the process that must be complied with. We don't know who's going to be sitting in that seat, you know, at some future date. Who's going to be sitting in your seats at some future date? And that's why we put things in the code. We think this is for the protection of all businesses. There's a requirement under the law in this section that says that the commission will consider the nature of the violation, the amount of money, the property, whether restitution's been paid, the risk of harm to future consumers. And all of these things are required to be considered as part of the process. And I believe, having dealt with this for many years, that one of the reasons that we don't hear complaints about the state bill is that we have this process to try to investigate it, to see what the gravity is, without going to court. And if you can't reconcile, and if you can't work it out, well, then, of course, you can go to court. So, none of that is in the bill. And that's the kind of thing, a protection, I think, that my clients would be looking for. And I think that other people, when they find out about this bill, will be looking for as well. Once again, I think every, we didn't catch the fact that this was happening. I was amazed. I would point out to you all that the code says that a subdivision with a consumer protection division may enact a statute which is more strict than the state law. And Montgomery County, Howard County have very robust, separate consumer protection departments. And I think they worked very hard to address complaints and address these issues. So, I firmly believe that if we could have some time to sit down with the city solicitor, with you, Mr. Chairman, get the other interested parties who don't know about this bill at all, we could come up with something. Just to say, I mean, I talked today to a representative of the Maryland Hospital Association. The biggest, who is the largest employer in Baltimore City? Hopkins, right? They are by far the largest employer in Baltimore City. They're going to be subject to this like everybody else. And so you might say, "Well, Mr. Enton, what's in this bill that's so harmful?" We heard the example. One of the things that caught my eye right away, and I couldn't initially figure out where it came from, is this bill says that every day is a separate violation. My experience, under the state law and under the laws of the other jurisdictions, is that if you violated the law because you have a provision in your insurance policy or the form that you sign at the doctor's office or whatever it is, even if there are, if that form's been on the books and nobody's ever complained about it for three years, I believe, under the bill, it could be interpreted to say that every day for that three-year period is a violation. And every patient that was seen at Hopkins for the last three years is a separate violation. And how many patients does Hopkins see a year? 200,000, 300,000? Times 365? Times 1,000? I mean, it's, and I know that's the top, if you will. But that's what the bill would provide. And I couldn't remember where I saw it from. And then in my conversation we had the other day, it was pointed out to me, well, that's in a number of sections in the city code for housing violations. You know, that each day, that the violation's not addressed, is a separate violation. But that's one person and one violation. And you've got a period of time. If you cure it right away, that's nothing. But that's not what this is all about. What worries me is that if I'm Hopkins or University of Maryland Medical System or Mercy Hospital or Walmart, whatever it is, CVS, I represent CVS. And I've had a policy on my books for many years. No one's ever questioned it. No one's ever challenged it. And then, all of a sudden, someone files, you know, someone says, "You know, that's a violation of the Baltimore City Consumer Protection Law." And I get sued. And then what's my measure of damages? Well, arguably, if the measure of damages is, and the only thing that would stop it from being for 10 years if I had it would be a statute of limitations on the filing of the suit, would be that, so let's say that's a three-year statute of limitations. Am I liable for 365 days, times three, for every one of the customers that I have? I just think those are things that need to think about and be clarified. All my clients, whether they're banks, whether they're pharmacies, they're all committed to Baltimore City. They all have a huge presence in Baltimore City. And we don't, I don't want them to leave Baltimore City. I was born in Baltimore City and lived in Baltimore City for most of my life in Baltimore. And I'm committed to making sure that Baltimore is a good place. To do that, we have to have businesses that are comfortable operating here. And the larger, the better. So I'm going to conclude by just saying that, I think, given some time, we'll be able to work this out. And I know I've worked out other bills with other members of the committee, both in Annapolis and here. And I think we just need to try to address these issues, if we can. This is, this bill, I think, well, I know the motives of the city solicitor are good. She's told me, and it's in their report, it's the door dashes, the grub hubs, the polymers of the world that she wants to go after with a fist. I don't represent any of them. And I represent people that have legitimate businesses and operate, you know, in the city, and they just want to make sure they don't have something on the books that could destroy them. So I'll conclude. I appreciate your patience very, very much for the amount of time you've given me in Annapolis. They would have cut me off 10 minutes ago. So, thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any councilman thoughts?
So I've reviewed 13-402, and then I'm looking at 13-102. I see no subjugation or reference to the commercial limitations. And then, in reference in the title, it says division, not subdivision. So I'm wondering why you have that interpretation? Because we were referred... Sorry. So, in the title of 13-402, it refers to the subdivision, which is the state's Attorney, which is Attorney General's Office. But in 13-102, it encourages us to adopt some of the principles of the actual statute. However, the principle for the division does not apply to us because it does not refer to us as a subdivision. So I'm just trying to understand why you interpret it that way. I just want to make sure. Because we are a subdivision, not a division of the state of Maryland. Two different corporations.
Hey, Bob. Just go to the microphone so we can hear you.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware of that provision until I read the report from the city solicitor. But it is in there. And I...
I see that division. I see that reference. However, it refers to the division, which is a state entity. The divisions of the state are separate corporations within the state of Maryland, agency-wise. So, in terms of agency law, we have permissive language under the other statute. But that statute does not reference in the actual statute that you're referring to, which governs the Council for Consumer Protections as well as the AG's office. So without that reference, you can't subjugate both together. I just want to make sure where the separate interpretation was coming from.
Yeah. If I misinterpreted that, I apologize. Let me take another look at it, and I'll be glad to get back to you.
Yeah, there, I looked at, I'm actually on, actually on CoMar now. There is actually no reference in those two titles, in the title, to each other. So I just want to make sure. We're encouraged, which is permissive language to adopt some of the principles that the division has. However, we're not strongly required to. So I just want to make sure that this was preemptive legislation that allowed us to do the actual litigation. But you're referring to an operation of a state agency, which probably will give us some issues with the state Attorney General's Office as well.
I'll be happy to get back to you on that. Thank you for raising that. And I would just say that, you know, I was surprised when I looked at the Howard County law and I looked at the Montgomery County law. And, you know, they're both fairly lengthy. But the vast majority of the provisions under those laws talk about, you know, the process of getting together with the consumer that made the complaint and the business who's the subject of the complaint. And trying to, you know, work it out and, you know. I know that's what the city solicitor would plan to do with her staff. But I think, you know, Baltimore City's a pretty big place in the state of Maryland, and you're going to have to have enough staff and provisions to do all that. But that's what, that's why those bills, I think, have been successful and not been challenged.
So here's my next question. Are you referring to us bringing litigation as the Corporation of Maryland City Council on behalf of all residents?
Councilman, can you speak up a little louder?
Sorry. So, here's my question, because I'm thinking about, recently, the decision by the Supreme Court with Biden versus Nebraska, right? With standing. My understanding is that we're using standing in this situation where we're bringing, where we've seen broad complaints among multiple constituents on behalf of the entire entity of Baltimore City, right? Not a specific individual. Whereas the division of the state is an individual-specific conversation in terms of, "I, James Torrance, have an issue with GEICO, and I want to bring litigation on behalf, I'm asking you as the Attorney General's Office to protect me as a consumer," and using you as the litigant. But you're using my standing to bring, you're using my standing as an individual to bring suit against them, right? Whereas we're bringing, in my understanding of reading our statute that is proposed, we're asserting that we have standing because it has impacted multiple persons that are under purview of the city council or the Corporation of Maryland City Council on behalf of them. So we're representing, basically, a class action in terms, we're saying that we've seen this by data-wise, informed by data, that we've seen this practice that we're bringing action on behalf versus "I, James Torrance," the individual, like you as the government entity to protect me. So I'm just wondering, why the inference of the two? Because I think we're referring to two different standings.
Yeah, I understand that. The, you know, it's the, I think it's somewhat uncharted territory. When you look at what the state, how the state law works, when you look at how the law works in Howard, when you look at how the law works in Montgomery, and it is a different framework. And I think that's one of the things we're not sure about. Is, you know, basically, what this is, is a litigation bill. This bill doesn't mention complaints. It doesn't mention conciliation or any of that. It just says, "We can sue you." And the measure of damages, to me, is, while it may work in the housing world, I've never seen any measure, you know, spelled out measure of damages like that. And I think if you were in my shoes, in my client's shoes, I think that you would look at it and say, "Gee whiz." I understand the other side, too. You want to make sure that Maryland, that Baltimore City residents are protected. And I get that. And we don't have a problem with putting in place a reasonable system to have that occur. We'd just like to have the opportunity to sit down and work with the city solicitor and the other interested parties to come up with something that we wouldn't, you know, that's balanced and that we would be comfortable with. That's all.
I hear you, but I'm interpreting the bill from... I'm gonna go scallying. I'm interpreting it as written, explicitly as stated, that we're just bringing litigation as an entity on behalf of the broad public, not a specific individual. Which means that by the statute, we would not have standing to bring suit based off of James Torrance the person. But we would need multiple litigants that we might be able to trace it back to, right? Which means that there was a harm to the entire city, not just one person. So I'm just being devil's advocate because I hear you. However, the statute as proposed is not as broad as possible that it should be if we wanted to go that route. Because that's why the agency was taken out from the original bill, which would be off of the complaint. And so, us merely having this conversation does preserve the legislative history for you to understand that that's the interpretation of the city.
I understand that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you have a question? But just to clear the record here. In my weekly newsletter on Mondays, I have a section at the very bottom that has the schedule of all of the hearings for the week. So that is what Mr. Enton happens to be on my email list. Many of you in this room are on my email list. So that's where the notice occurred. So all of the hearings are always on those emails. My question is this. There's obviously been some conversation about the state law versus city. It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, the Attorney General has a bit of a higher bar to meet in order to do litigation, simply because they're representing the entire state. So if something is, that we're dealing with in the city is happening, folks could complain to the Attorney General. But if it's not something that's going on for the entire state, they may not take it on. So, don't you think that we need, I mean, we need to have a local statute so that we can actually take on issues that we're, and the solicitor can take on issues? Because we can't, the Attorney General has a lot going on statewide. So, I mean, I'm hearing that you're willing to work with us on this, but I don't want to be, I don't want to misunderstand that, you know, the state law and what the Attorney General's Office I don't want to misunderstand that, you know, the state law and what the Attorney General's Office isn't doing what we need to do. We need to have a local law in order to address some of the main big issues, and I can go on and on about what they are, at least in my district, to, to address this issue. So correct me if I'm wrong on, on that. I mean, I think we need a local law.
Thank you. I, I, trust me, I understand that. And I, I didn't say you shouldn't have a law. I didn't say you shouldn't be able to bring a cause of action. I didn't say that at all. I just said that what we'd like to do is be able to sit down and take a look at the law, look at how it works and see if we can, you know, give our clients, and I think you're going to hear from a lot of other businesses, you know, companies that do business in Baltimore City, both for-profit and nonprofit, whatever, that are large companies, just to get a level of comfort that, yeah, you know, this, this is going to, there's going to be a process and the, the measure of damages is reasonable and will be effective. We just, you know, that's, that's what we want to sit down and, and talk about, that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions? And Bob, also, if you can just, you, you referenced a list of exemptions on the state law before, during your testimony. If you can just provide that list
Sure.
to me of all those things that you are, that are on that list?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you should let them know at the state level that we, we give more time in the City Council. Next up, Catherine Howard. Kathy?
Good afternoon. Catherine Howard for the Regional Management Inc. I'm, for those of you who do not know me, I'm General Counsel for Regional Management. Regional Management has been a housing provider in Baltimore City since the 1960s. We're sixty-some years old now. And we have a very, a very narrow concern about this bill. I think that I could, should support everything that Mr. Enton and Mr. Greenfield have said. We would be very happy to work with you on crafting this bill. But there's one particular area of this that I think that is very important for rental housing providers here in Baltimore City. And I think that this bill, unfortunately, is designed to kind of overlook the robust laws and policies and procedures that we have to keep rental housing providers doing the things that they are supposed to do to help their, help and, and support their residential rental customers. I have a series of amendments, not too many of them, that I have written up that we think would go a long way to making sure that the, there's, we, we avoid confusion amongst both housing providers and how, and the rental housing residents about what this consumer protection bill is supposed to actually be doing. We had a conversation yesterday and I think that it's worth talking about here about the fact that, that the Law Department is not necessarily looking to deal with the individual problems of individual residents versus their landlords. That is something that the Attorney General's Office has done for very many years very well for all, in, in all jurisdictions across the state. If somebody has a problem with their security deposit refund, they can file a claim, a complaint with the Attorney General's Office and that, they have, they are equipped to do something about that on a, on a case-by-case basis. And we've, we have worked with them for a very long time on things like that. But I don't think that that's what the focus of this bill is really designed to be. I think it's, it is very laudable that they, that the focus of this bill is to go after the large bad actors, some of whom have been sort of called out already by Madam City Solicitor. And I think that we have to take a real step back and see, and, and look at what we already have on the books with regard to residential rental property, the residential property sector. And, and realize that we have a very robust, robust and very, I think, very efficient section of that, of that law, particularly with the Department of the Housing and Community Development and what they are doing. And that, that probably does not really have a place in this bill as a regulatory part of this bill. So that, I, you know, with the amendments that I've offered, I'm certainly happy to work with the, whatever work group that might come around or whatever, however the Council decides to go forward with this. But I think that, that those two things, that residential rental property is already very, very well regulated by the city and that it does not, it is not on the, on the, it is not really a good idea to have a secondary kind of set of procedures, if you will, that apply to them as well and they should be exempted.
Guys, so just my, my first question on that. Do you feel that there's stricter rules here than, than on the state level?
I think there, I do, I don't, I think that there are, I'm not sure whether we have stricter rules in this bill, but I think based on the conversations that we have had, I think that what a lot of people are going to think is that this may be a stricter rule that would apply to residential housing providers. And that, I think that people will be very much confused when it turns out that, that the City Solicitor's Office is not really equipped to deal with the, the concerns of residential residents versus their residential housing provider. And I think that that's going to cause confusion and I think we need to stop that right at the very beginning, make sure that that's going to the state office, which is used to dealing with those kinds of claims. And make sure that we are not, you know, misguiding or misdoing something that is going to be confusing to our citizens who know that there are already in place a lot of, a lot of regulations and a lot of laws that make residential housing providers and their, their residents work together and have a good relationship.
Right, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the Law Department, so if I'm incorrect in any way, please, please cut me off. But I think the Law Department is pretty clear on the intention and who the target, you know, litigation would be against. And I think they've been very clear that this is not for individual one-off situations where you have an individual person who, who may have been harmed by a company. These are widespread issues that have far-ranging implications to the citizens like cases of ghost guns or other, you know, fees that may have impacts, small impacts, but wide-ranging, maybe, you know, five dollars a person, but it's impacting 50,000 people. No one person is going to take up that case, but the City Law Department could take on that case on behalf of, you know, the thousands of people who are being harmed. So I, I think they've been very clear that, you know, they're not looking to go after an apartment community. They're not looking to go after an individual restaurant, business, you know, mom and pop shop, small businesses. There wouldn't even be money in that, in those, in those cases to go after, you know, small businesses. That's certainly not, not the, the, the market for this case. And this is certainly, my understanding is not, not the intention, nor would it even make sense, nor does the City Law Department have the capacity to even take up everybody's issues on, on small, small-ranging issues.
I, I couldn't agree with you more, but I think that it needs to, I do believe that at the moment, the way the bill is drafted, it's not clear that that's the intention. And I think that, that we need to, as Mr. Enton has indicated, do a little bit more homework on this in order to make sure that that intention, the intention of the bill is, is exactly what the City Solicitor's Office and the Council is indicating that they are concerned about. But I think we also have to answer the, and clarify that what we're doing in the bill and the language of the bill so that the everyday citizen who reads it does not think that this is a bill that is going to bring them some kind of solace when they need to, when they feel that they need to have a claim against their landlord, which is simply not, I don't think, on the radar screen. And I think we can fix that very easily.
Sure. And, and so, you know, I'll, I'll ask this question of the Law Department, but I'll just tell you from my experience, from my years on the Council. And I, I share the concern that, that you're raising and I've shared that on numerous bills over the past seven years. What I've come across each time has been that the city hasn't had the authority or the ability to be less strict or to have certain carve-outs that the state law doesn't explicitly give us permission to do so. And so a lot of things that the City Council as a whole or individual council members have wanted to pass legislatively, they either require certain state, you know, state-enabling legislation or they could make it more strict than the state, which is often the case, and often I disagree with that. And in this, in this case, it seems like this bill isn't any more strict than the state. And therefore, I mean, I guess I'd ask the Solicitor if you're aware, do we have as a, can the committee right now make this, like, make this bill less strict than the state law?
No, no, Mr. Chair. And if the, the, several of the opponents that spoke, that testified, said that there were certain exceptions. We have never seen an exception for where they're trying to have a carve-out for realty or the real estate sector. That's not part of that. So if we were to intentionally carve that out, that would be less strict and that would be a violation. That is our reading. And also just another point, we do believe that this bill achieves exactly what we want. There are specific instances where we have other nuisance lawsuits. A good example of that where we, you know, we're still feeling the pain from that with Polymer 80 is we weren't able to add on the consumer protection piece of that because we didn't have, have that bill. So trying to carve out, and I understand that, you know, opponents want to advocate for their individual clients. Law Department is supposed to advocate for the city and the interests of the city, and that includes its residents. And it's not just a litigation bill. One of the most important functions of this is the injunctive features to stop the bad actors. So, for instance, Grubhub, DoorDash, deceptive charges. Who's going to pay 200, 300 bucks if you're overcharged $3 for something that says city tax, but it's not really imposed by city tax, right? Who's going to do that? No one. So the city would have the ability. Unfortunately, we have great, 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 we have great businesses here, but unfortunately, we have some businesses that use deception to gain profits. And unfortunately, they will only learn that if it's no longer profitable or if there's injunctive relief to force them to stop. And it's time for us to advocate for our residents. We believe this bill does it. And if there are exceptions, by adopting this bill, we are adopting those exceptions, but I can guarantee you, but it's not, the real estate sector is not what they're attempting to carve out, where they're just trying to say, "Real estate just shouldn't be part of it." That's not a carve-out that's in, in the state legislation. I do also want to highlight really quickly that the state is a daily charge per offense. And I do want to have Tom Webb, who I believe he used to prosecute, he was over there to testify that that was actually the practice. And that is how DC acquired the four and a half million dollars that they did from Polymer 80 because it is daily. This is not something that the Law Department is just going out on a limb and we are doing this daily. This is how consumer protection in general, those, this is how the fees and the fines are amassed. So if you could speak to that, that would be great.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Webb. I also work in the Affirmative Litigation Division in the City Law Department. And I did have a stint at the Consumer Protection Division in the Attorney General's Office a few years back. And I can confirm that the way it is done, the practice of the Consumer Protection Division at the state is to assess penalties by day in certain instances. Now, there is discretion at the Attorney General's Office and there would be discretion at the city and with any judge who is considering these cases about what types of penalties to assess and how much to assess. But it is in, in, in this law, it's also a practice in Chicago and other jurisdictions who have local consumer protection ordinances to assess by day. So there is nothing unusual about what the city is doing here in terms of assessment by day.
And so, being that you came from there, are you familiar with, with carve-outs that are in that state law?
I, I am familiar with carve-outs in the state law. I can't, sitting here today, go through, tick them all off for you one by one. I can tell you, as the Solicitor said, consumer realty is absolutely not one of those carve-outs. Consumer realty is firmly within the Maryland statute. So I, I agree with the Solicitor's position. There's a very clear provision in the state law that states, as you'd mentioned, that we cannot legislate less strictly, right? We can only go up to the boundaries. It's specifically stated as a minimum protection in the state of Maryland. So to take that out, which is when the law is, would be violative of that piece of the statute.
So just to clarify for, if the committee's wish is to carve out the real estate community, because we understand there's a whole series of regulations and a separate channel there that are extremely strict. And so if this committee's wish for this legislation was to just completely carve out that industry, you're saying that wouldn't even be possible?
That is what I'm saying. I, I would defer to Mr. Hochstetler, who is, that's more directly under his purview. But yes, that is the, the position of the Law Department, that I don't believe we could approve that for a form and legal sufficiency if it came before us.
Thanks, Chair Schifer. Jeff Hochstetler with the Law Department. In the Law Department's report, we do state that we approve the bill as written for form and legal sufficiency as, as we interpret the state law and the state authorizing law, which allows us to have local consumer protection standards. Anything that would be less stringent than the state standards would not be able to be approved for forming legal sufficiency. And that would include keeping in all of the categories that are currently in the state law.
Got you.
Well, I, the retort that I have to both of you.
So, yeah, just, just one thing as far as, you just have to testify to us. So you can say whatever you want to say, we got to say it to the, to the committee.
Yes. Very, very quickly with regard to that, the, I think Mr. Enton touched on one of the, the, the problems here is with the, the DA, when, if you have a, if you as a rental, as a rental landlord have a problem under the DHCD laws, there are, there are very stiff penalties that you're going to potentially pay in dealing with that as long, in, in, in the law already. And then we are now going to throw this overlay on top of that already working, robust protection that is in the DA, in the, the housing and community development part of this law, of the current law. And I, you know, it, I understand that, that the, that yours, the, I understand what the Law Department is saying. However, I think that, that unfortunately, there is not necessarily a, a companion law like the penalties that are put into the DHCD situation that equate in state law to what we are talking about in, in the state consumer protection law. And that is, and the fact, quite frankly, again, I'm very concerned about the confusion that may occur in what, what is the extent of this bill and what its reach is supposed to be. Its reach is supposed to be reaching for big bad actors who are, are harming the citizens of Baltimore City. But the, the problem is, is that each individual may want to have their own day against, in, in Baltimore City, against their Baltimore City landlord. And I, and I don't think, I know that, that this bill is not designed to do that. It's not the intent of the bill to do that and not to give that, that comfort to or a chance to use an individual, to deal with an individual problem. But unfortunately, I, there's nothing in this bill that makes that clear. And I think somewhere along the line, it's got to be clarified, clarified if that's what the intent of this bill actually is. It is very expensive for a small, a small landlord with 3,800 properties in this town to, to be worried about dealing with a, a large, very sweeping bill like this with these kinds of penalties in them.
Yes, I mean, it, it just happens to be, just my, my note on this is, it just happens to be that that's one of the places where the, the State Attorney General's Office does focus very heavily on is in real estate. So that's certainly not a, that's not a sector that the City Law Department needs to, needs to be focusing on because the State Attorney General's Office is already focusing on that. So as they, they stated, the intent is to focus on things like ghost guns and other things that they, that have a unique impact to Baltimore City, but are not necessarily impacting other, you know, the state as a whole. So, thank you.
We certainly understand that, but again, the comfort level that we are feeling is not very high right now.
Got you.
Just letting you know.
Councilman Torrance?
So I'm going to clarify something because 13-104, when I review it again after reading the entire statute forward and backwards, it does provide those exceptions. So this actual, our actual statute would incorporate the actual exceptions for the gentleman that came earlier. So it does provide that protection. However, the other subsection refers to the Division. So that is not applicable to our current statute. I just want to make sure. But in terms of the, I hear you in terms of small landlords, large landlords. I can tell you right now, I have a landlord who owns three buildings in my district who ignores all the fines and citations that we've issued. And the only recourse we currently have now is condemnation, which would then leave someone to be not only unhoused, but a empty property that impacts that landlord. Whereas the only other way that we, we could bring some type of redress for those persons who are impacted with possibly rats and lead and all those things, it's going to be hard, right? I don't see this impacting someone who may be my neighbor who has an apartment in the basement of their home because it's only impacting one person versus someone who may own 30 income properties and has been, has been discriminating against persons of color. Or income discrimination for persons who are for vouchers. color, or income discrimination for persons who are for vouchers, right? Those are things that we have to worry about in a housing crisis. I know your, your, your company never had a complaint about them, right? So I get you being here, being proactive to understand it. I think what's here is that, one of the things that's missing in this conversation is that all those things still have to go through housing court that you're talking about in terms of like the redress and then the Attorney General's Office. So I think that outside of what is currently in process, in terms of what the AG's office is doing, we're, we, as we have this conversation now, I'm putting it on the legislative record, that we are not interested in that. So if the law department were to try to go and do that later, it would be inconsistent. You can get injunction against us, and the legislative history will support you getting that injunction, right? Because we're having this conversation, it's publicly available on YouTube. You don't even have to file an MPIA request for it, more likely, right? Just to verify it, right? But I hear the gentleman for the other issues in terms of exceptions. I agree with the exceptions. I think this statute should have those exceptions because it is clearly written in the statute. However, the portion of the division in terms of the Attorney General's Office should not be brought into the statute. While we can adopt more stringent laws according to the statute, we're choosing not to adopt that stringent piece, which would then handcuff the law department to the standard that the Attorney General's Office is. So I agree with you that we should not provide them with a capacity of the Attorney General's Office because they don't have the capacity. So by, if we did that provision, we would basically bring home the actual issue that you said, that the capacity. So we're not gonna add that to them. I, I don't know if I'm speaking for my colleagues, but I think that would essentially devalue the power of this bill.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Anybody else wish to testify?
So, just so that I'm clear, are you saying that the committee is going to write in a carve-out for consumer realty into this legislation?
No. The conversation was, is there even a legal ability to make a carve-out? And the answer is no. The state law wouldn't allow for that carve-out.
Okay. Would there be any carve-outs added to this?
We're not discussing any, any of that at this moment, I mean, but we were just talking about what abilities there are based on what the state law would enable us to do, and we can't, we can't do anything that the state law doesn't have in place.
Right, okay. I just wanted to be clear that the consumer realty piece would not be carved out of the bill, because then we would change our assessment of the bill if that was the case. So thank you for that clarity.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, any other, any other questions? All right, we will, we will pick this back up on Monday, September 18th at 11:45.
Mr. Chair, did they just call, did you just call it, it's gonna be the 12th now, GC, for the council hearing?
That's for a separate hearing for
Oh, sorry, sorry. I just saw my email and I was just checking it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much. We are now on recess.